Call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, mic up. Number three, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. 3.1 additions. 3.11, Steve Pumper, PMA. 3.12, ratifying the sale of a series of 2023 A general obligation bonds. 3.13, change meeting time for September 25th, 2023 regular school meeting. And then deletions, approved crisis management plan for action. And 3.22, approved agreement for architectural services between Pipestone Area Schools and TSP. We'll now go to number four, public forum. Five, presentation. 5.1, TSP.
All right, board members, community members this evening, we have Lucas Lorenzen. I believe I'm saying that correctly, Lucas, am I?
Yes, sir.
All right, super from TSP. And this is the architectural firm that we're working with on our project. We do not have the final agreement this evening. That's why it was removed from the agenda. We have presented that to legal counsel. There's a couple of small things that we're working through to finalize that. But invited Lucas nonetheless to give us an update, some timelines, some projections, because I know there are a lot of questions and curiosity that's floating about the progress and progression of the project. So he agreed to come this evening and introduce himself and lay out some work that's going on in terms of mapping things out. So there you go, Lucas.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for having me. Really just going to be quick and informal and then open any questions I guess you have. This is really just a draft schedule based on what we know today. We, as you can see, the kickoff there of September 18th is under the assumption that maybe there would be a special meeting to approve the contract so we can get started. So that, that start date really is, is what's kind of driving the whole schedule. So you can see, based on that, it goes all the way out. Right up at the top right, you can see the completion of the design in early February. Now, all of this schedule really is negotiable, but in there you'll see, the red really represents, on the left side, the kind of pink colors represent the weeks of the design. And there's some review periods for Kraus Anderson to work through their estimating process. Now, some of this might be able to overlap, but this really is kind of an ideal design schedule. So it's broken down into three phases, the schematic design phase, the design development phase, and the construction documents phase. I have input of few that I know based on the school calendar, dates to be aware of, and we can use this as a working document and adjust it too. A couple of things maybe for each phase. When we're working through schematic design, we want to have at least one, what we're calling a workshop, and that's really to gather input and to understand the scope of the project. During that first four weeks in that phase, we are going to be putting some definition to what we understand the project to be. Some of that will be understanding major systems mechanically, electrically, that we're going to be impacting. You know, the fax kitchen, for example, where, where is that exhaust going to go? How do we understand the existing system? So we're building the existing systems in the different areas that we're going to be affecting, and then trying to understand big, big picture, you know, what Kraus Anderson understands today, and does that align with what's feasible and trying to gain some accuracy there. So we'll go through that four-week phase and then have a couple of weeks for Kraus Anderson to put together an estimate and then sign off on that first phase. Then the second phase, we put a couple of different workshops in there separated by just over two weeks, almost three weeks between them. In those workshops, we may be working more with, whether it's the board or subcommittee, a building committee of sorts if that gets decided, and maybe some representatives on the staff to really refine what we know. So we're getting, at the end of design development, our goal is to be able to have every, every component, it may not be exactly detailed to get built, but everything that needs to get priced will be defined in that set of documents. So that, really, that's, that's the end, usually that's the end of the cost estimating that they're going to do at the end of design development. So again, we have a couple of weeks there at the end of design development that ends just before Christmas. Then it leaves a six-week construction documents phase. And really what we do there is hone in on the accuracy. We're going to be just defining everything down so that when it goes to bid, the contractors clearly understand what is in the project and you can get accurate and competitive bids. That puts us then into that first week in, in February. You're going to probably expect to see about a three, three-week plus or minus, probably three to four weeks, I would say, for bidding, and then a bid open towards the end of the month or early March. And then, you know, construction can start as soon as they can get ramped up. And I know, I know if you, if you refer back to Kraus Anderson's schedule, they were, they were targeting more in January, but just if you can kind of see how the design schedule lays out, the sooner we get started, the sooner we can get done. And then we'll work with you if, if between us and Kraus Anderson and the board decide that we really need to get this thing done a little sooner so that we can have a better bid environment or whatever and have you, we will, we'll work with you to get it done. So that's, that's really all, all I had was just to kind of lay out the schedule, a few of the meetings that we might expect. They're all, they're all really placeholders. There's no hard dates there. That's really the first thing we would want to do once the board approves the contract is get together with the board and Kraus Anderson and come up with this schedule with some more hard dates to run.
Okay. Any questions for Lucas?
So to get moving, we just have to, we have to approve the contract?
That's the big.
Okay.
Get things going. And then I list on there at the beginning, two things that may or may not already be either in motion or available is a survey. The field may have already been surveyed, you have to see if that exists, and then get some soil borings. That's kind of critical to the design. Has a couple of months lead time to get that, so you want to get that going so that that's ready by the end of the design.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, 5.2, Steve Pumper, PMA.
Well, good evening, everyone, again, Mr. Chair, board members, Mr. Superintendent, Steve Pumper, PMA, financial. Lucas started to talk about the fun stuff, right? You know, all the stuff you did at start designing and ultimately building. And I'm here to report on how you're funding it. I know we had a lot of these presentations over the past about six-month period of time, and now it's come to fruition. We have held a bond sale. I'm here to present the results, and your money should be here soon. So again, and just recapping, these are some of the items that the board decided they wanted to fund. You're going to fund roughly about $2.88 million of those dollars through bonds, proceeds, and then the balance, the funding is coming from some funds the district already has on hand. The two components that you're using to fund are the remaining authority, the $2,315,000 from the voter-approved bonds that you went to the voters back in 2019. And then you're also funding the balance with some capital facility bonds, which as a reminder, you're just using current allocation of capital dollars on an annual basis to pay back these bonds so you get the dollars up front. When we went to bid on August 23rd, we had five bidders present bids. They're listed there on the slide in front of you. Robert W. Baird was the lowest bidder at a 3.3105% true interest cost. You can see that the bids were all pretty tight, which is a good thing. It means that all the bidders were pretty close to the market, although Robert W. Baird was a little bit more aggressive than the other four bidders, so that's who the bid was awarded to. We look at the sales summary, we can see this is what we presented to the board when I was here the last time in that first call, the pre-sell finance plan, and then where the final results came in. So the, one of the, one of the pieces I want to point out to you or a couple around here is that second row where it says the power of the capital facilities bonds, we were able to sell only $370,000 of those capital facility bonds as opposed to the 415. The board actually gave us authority to sell $615,000 that night, if you remember the discussion. And where this is good is because now you will have less to pay annually from your ongoing capital facilities. I'll show you that going now. And that's the result of the premium being higher on the, on both of those bonds as we came in. So that's actually a really good result for you. True interest cost is a little bit lower, which ultimately makes your total principal interest about $60,000 lower than what we initially estimated. So all good results. This is just a graphic that shows you how the new bonds overlay, the red portion of bars are the new debt that you're incurring that goes over the, the blue and yellow bonds that you currently have outstanding. And then here in the capital facility bonds piece, if you look in the right-hand side, you'll notice that, that the annual payments are roughly just under $53,000. When I was showing you what the impact would be up to that $615,000 apart, it was closer to $75,000 to $80,000 a year. So that's really good. It means just saving your annual budgets and all over the next 10-year period of time. So that's obviously a very good result there. This slide just shows you all the sources and uses. The main piece on the right-hand side is the row that shows that you'll have $2.8 million of funding coming in that will go straight to your construction fund. All the other pieces in, for the purpose of transparency, just show you where all the rest of the dollars are going. And then we just kind of have a calendar showing what has happened, when the board gave authority back in July, or sorry, at the end of June. And then we had the rating call in July, which Jackie and Superintendent Holder both participated in, did a great job especially, but being new to the district, it's nice to have him on there as well. Jackie certainly carried the weight of it all. Thank you, Jackie. Was a slight new credit, but. Credit or credit to.
That's right.
And then tonight, of course, on August 28th, this is where you approved the last resolution to ratify the sale. The dollars will then come into your account on September 20th, and you'll have the funds available then to start paying for project expenditures. You're just an expert of the S and P rating. You received an A+, which is excellent for a school district, especially a school district of size. Just one of the highlights there is kind of real now, very strong available reserves supported by a trend of better-than-budgeted operating performance with circumstances. And again, hey, the board knows that with the budgets that you approve, the board, and it's presented to you, that you use a lot of conservative assumptions both on your own and on expenses and on revenues. And you, you have a distinct tradition of always coming in better than what you approved, and S and P noted that as well. So the next steps, again, the funds come in on September 20th. We will, those funds will come into an account that we set up in your admin trust accounts. We'll be investing those proceeds. Any additional dollars that you earn on those proceeds for the construction project, you're able to use, but only for construction purposes. So it will not help your general fund. At least certainly will be able to be used to enhance your project as you go forward. We are in a situation where arbitrage should be coming to play. However, and I'm sorry, let me just quickly explain what arbitrage is. When you sell tax-exempt debt, you're able to sell at an advantage because you and I, as individuals, cannot sell tax-exempt debt. So the government says that you're restricted in how much interest earnings you can earn based on what the true interest cost was when you sold the debt. However, since you're selling less than $15 million in the, in the calendar year, you're exempt from that requirement. So all the interest that you will be able to earn, you should be able to keep. And right now, if the money's just sitting liquid in the account, you're getting close to 5.25% on that one. So it's serious money, you know, $2.8 billion that's a lot sitting there. We'll do other, other things besides just keeping it liquid as well to get you higher ratio. But we'll monitor everything and stay, make sure you, you stay within higher risk compliance. And I think that's my last slide yet. With that, I will turn over to you, Mr. Chair, for questions, and then to pass the question.
Do we have any questions?
So if we don't, the interest we earn, would that go against so we wouldn't have to take as much out of the general fund then?
Yeah, all the interest you earn would go to project expenditures.
Yes, but indirectly, we're taking the rest out of our general fund, correct?
Well.
Capital projects fund.
Our own means.
Yeah.
From our own means.
Yes, yes. So anything we earn, we're going to take less out of there then.
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah.
That's your decision to make, obviously.
Yeah. No, I'm, yeah, I'm asking that question.
Because we're, we're funding, I have a question.
Yeah.
We're, we're funding part of it with the Hill and Brown proceeds.
Yep.
$300,000, and then these are just new numbers, which doesn't include interest. And then the remainder was, we had some LTFM obligated for the track already.
Yep.
So that would be $104,323. So what you're saying is if we, that interest, we can use to offset those two.
Costs.
Yes, yes. I mean, because then we had some other money we were going to use to fund the rest of it after them. We were still short after the Brown and the.
No, no, we're good. We have to take the $300,000 from the Brown and Hill proceeds and $104,323 dollars from already allocated for the LTFM for the.
Okay.
And that's what the new numbers coming in, that we're going to deposit in the construction fund in $2,883, so.
Good.
We're good, we're good.
No, I just want to make sure we.
Yep.
Okay, then we'll, we'll jump ahead to 11.7. Let's approve ratifying the sale of the series 2023 A general obligation bonds.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
I'm sure who's the second? Steve.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Oppose, same side. Motion passes.
Very good.
Now, we'll pause for a minute. He needs to get some signatures.
Perfect. Now for a minute, we'll take off.
Fantastic. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help throughout the process.
All right, moving on. Number six, consent agenda. Everyone had a chance to look through the consent agenda? Okay, get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. Number seven, financials. 7.1, review of budget year-to-date. Jackie?
This will be the last one. You're getting for fiscal year '23. Next month, you'll get one for fiscal year '24 as I close the books on, by September 15th. It looks like one line will come out better than normal, but.
Good, yeah.
Other than that, all I know, do you have any questions?
Gold star for Jackie. Yes.
I was looking through that too, and I, yeah, it looked like the extra cleaning bills are on there too. And so it's. Good to hear that.
Yeah, the extra what's on here?
Was, was the INTEC?
No.
Or not?
That would be fiscal year '24.
That's, yeah. Because it started after July 1.
Yeah, this is just '23, and I can't run a '24 one until I close my books because it, my system won't let me do it.
So there's still a very large increase.
Which optic code are you looking at?
Well, I mean, look at the light, I don't know what it is.
You're looking at 350 repairs and maintenance? Or I don't know which one you're looking at.
Yes, repairs and maintenance.
Yes. There are other things in repairs and maintenance just besides facilities, but the majority of it is facilities.
Okay.
And I think there was, there were some unexpected repairs and maintenance here too that we also got insurance proceeds for, which you won't see on the expense side. It'll just, you'll see the insurance proceeds on the revenue side.
For the playground.
Oh, yeah, the playground, yeah. That's one problem.
Playground and then wasn't there a skylight or something in here? And there, yeah, there were a couple of things. So you can look at that, but there's going to be other variables in there, you know what I mean? And I could tell you what those were, but not just by looking at this, I can't.
Any other questions for Jackie? Okay, moving on, 7.2, approved treasurer's report for July 2023.
Yeah, current cash balance is $7.5 million. The last year at this time was $7.3 million, so that's good. We're getting a lot, we're getting a lot more interest, our interest rates are, if you look down in the bottom, anywhere from 4.0. We're getting one at 5%, so that's nice. At one time, we, at one time, I think our interest income for the year was like $18,000, and I was like $150,000. So it's, that's a good thing.
It makes a difference.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Measurable difference.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for July of 2023?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same side. Motion passes. 7.3, approve regular bills for August 2023.
There's a lot of bills.
There was a lot of bills.
I was like.
All for the new year, all.
Which is what I came in for, yeah.
Yeah, I only had one, but, and that was on the PDC one, but that was for a storage shed.
Correct, for community ed. They split it, I think, between football and.
What, I don't know which page it was on, but it was Pipestone County Medical Center. Is that just like for like community ed stuff too? Or what is that?
I think that's normally, isn't that?
That's normally OTE.
Oh.
That's Ben.
Gosh.
Yeah. It's community ed football, they share that. It might even be basketball, but they share that storage.
Okay.
Shut.
Anybody else have any questions on the regular bills? Can I get a motion to approve the regular bills for August 2023?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. 7.4, approve high school activity bills for August 2023. Everybody get a chance to look through the high school activity bills? Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the high school activity bills for August of 2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. Number eight, board forum information. 8.1, board reports and updates.
Well, I don't think I've been to anything. Says, no.
New teacher.
No committees, but we had the new teacher.
Yeah, me and Daphne went to the new teacher luncheon. That was good. Got to meet the new teachers and have lunch with the new principal. It was good.
Yeah, and this morning was fabulous.
It was, it was good this morning.
Yep.
Yep.
I thought that was really good.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I got one thing, I got one, well, a couple of things that I wanted to bring. I want, I want us to look at and discuss the dress code. It was a year or two ago, we, we changed it and made it, and made it, made it looser. And I think we should revisit that and get it back to the way it's supposed to be, in my opinion. And primarily that's hats and hoodies. And, you know, make sure, you know, no midriff, no sleeveless shirts cut down to the waist on guys that were, that we.
And I think that's good. I do think it's, a lot of it's follow-through. I mean, on the dress, a lot of that is in the dress code already, because I've been on the policy committee, so a lot of it is in the dress code already. It's just not always being implemented or not always being.
What is the process to implement?
Well, you would have to have teachers or principals or whoever making sure that it's.
Enforce it.
Enforced. You know what I mean? And the hard, and the hard part is, is I think sometimes it's being enforced. Well, we had students that came and talked to the board that one time they felt that it was being enforced on some people and not, on some students and not on others. So, yeah, I just, I think it's important that we make sure that it's being enforced across the board if we're going to enforce it and that it is done every day. Instead of like this week, we're going to do it, and then next week, we're going to let it go, you know? And I, and I do think too, it's important to talk to coaches and people, you know, people like that that can tell their teams or tell their classrooms that this is what we're going to do, you know, so that it's a, this is what's going to happen. So it's not something that last year it was okay, and now this year it's not, and we don't. Whether it be in, you know, the first week of school or whatever, I think it needs to.
So does this carry over to school functions as well if you're on a team or a manager, not in the, in.
To me, as a team, as a team, you're still part of this. That's my thoughts.
School-sponsored activity.
Yes, you're still, I mean, I don't think you, I don't know how much you can really do to keep kids in a span. I mean, like if they're out of game.
Speculators.
But if you're sitting on that bench down there or representing Pipestone Schools down there, I believe you should, it should be adhered to.
Yep, so I, I don't know what, I don't know what next step would be, but I think we need to.
Probably have the policy committee revisit it.
Revisit it and. I think we're, we're preparing these students for the world after the school, and it's not going to be using any easier for them when they leave this building. And those are pretty easy, in my opinion, rules to follow, to put them in a better position to.
Right. And I think it's a respect thing for our staff too. To not have your hood up, to not have your airbrush in your ears, your pots, whatever. You know, I mean, a lot of that stuff is just a respect thing.
Later on in the meeting, you do have the high school handbook that's in front of you, and on page 15 of the handbook, it states, "The responsibility of proper dress rests with students and parents. Students should take pride in their attire. Common courtesy means appropriate dress, including footwear be worn at all times is expected. Students will dress modestly during the school day and at school events. The appearance of students becomes a concern of the school if it causes disruption of the educational. The appearance of students becomes a concern of the school if it causes disruption of the educational program or if it's offensive or inappropriate to others." Examples, inappropriate dressing grooming, and then it lists seven different things here, so I'll read them quickly. Clothing such as hats, caps and hoods that are hazardous to students and school activities such as shop, lab, work, physical education and art. Clothing that is potentially dangerous or may be detrimental to the learning environment. Could argue that that's a midriff. Clothing resembling sleepwear such as pajamas, slippers, houseware, or excuse me, house shoes, unless special events. Clothing that does not cover the shoulder or midriff. Clothing that is extremely short, sagging or bagging of jeans, clothing that has profanity or suggests themes such as alcohol, drugs, sex, violence, or has slogans offensive to the rights of others. So that's what the proposed language is, and that's not changed from previous years. That's according to, uh, policy five oh four that the board has adopted.
So is it just enforcing?
Yeah.
I think a lot of it is enforcing, yeah.
Your policy right now states it's up to the building principal when it came to the hoodies and hats, if you recall.
Because that's what we changed it, yeah.
Okay.
And, and maybe we should do a policy committee and get Dr. or Mr. Huesman's, you know, thoughts on it too. And.
It's me. Hats and hoodies probably fall into a, under a security issue too.
Safety and security, yeah.
Think if you're going to do something, you want to start it off the first day of school.
I agree, yeah.
Close it, communicate it.
Yep.
You don't want to wait till the first of October and then start it. Do you agree?
Yes, that is what I wanted to do. That is what I have notified toward the staff. Um, I've talked to the dean of students, who Scott will be dealing with that as well, that we need to raise the bar and expectations. And you're correct, coming in partly through the year.
Yeah, yeah.
But really, if it's in there, it's just a matter of.
Right, and I have.
You're in agreeance with trying to enforce it?
A hundred percent, yes.
To me, if you and Scott and Ms. Marv started enforcing it, I think it's all correct already, isn't it? I mean.
Because one of the things that you, in my opinion, that you need in order to do that, like with shirts, midriffs, other things that we did at my previous school was we went out and bought a bunch of T-shirts in the school color. And so if student A is wearing a shirt that's inappropriate, they get our shirt. They go in the restroom and change and they bring us their clothes back that they get back at the end of the day and we get our shirt. And then our life skills kids or, uh, whomever would wash those shirts, so they would always be clean. But it would be a, a school shirt and we would give them to them. Now, one thing that we ran into in the past was, um, parents would say, well, I'll bring my kid up something to wear. Well, no, now it's too late. You know, they already chose to wear this. We're not a Macy's where you can just. So, uh, that, that's where that lies. The same thing with the hats and hoodies. If you, if you hit that hard at first, there's always going to be a, a behavior explosion, so to speak, where it always goes up as there's rebellion. And, and then it goes back down. So you have to, to know that that's, that's coming and I, I have zero problem with that. I was planning on hitting that pretty good.
Something you can bring up with like orientations and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. It's in the policy, then the, or.
It's in the handbook, it's in your policies, so.
It's right in my notes.
Student orientations coming up here, so.
This week, yeah.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Yeah.
It's, it's probably.
Yeah, I do, I think a lot of it's just the enforcement of it. But I do think it's important to like talk to teachers, staff, coaches.
Right. And, you know, you had brought up about, um, students saying, you know, I got caught today, but student B did not. It's kind of like the old adage, well, have you gone fishing? Yes, to catch all the fish. No.
Right.
You know, we, we do, we'll get as what we can, but we're not going to get every single person every single time.
Right.
I mean, that's just a fact. But you have to at least be out there doing what, what you can and you need staff cooperation.
Yeah.
Parent participation.
Yep.
Perfect. I think it's good. Start day number one, anyone?
Well, if you tell parents and students expectations upfront, then they can't feel surprised. I mean.
And to put it on, out on social media or even the website.
Yeah.
Just here's our expectations for dressing room.
Yep.
Anything else from Sparts Board? Okay, move on to number nine, administrator's report. Nine point one, superintendent's board report.
All right, board members, just a few things to highlight. It is back to school and we had a wonderful day as we launched today. I thought, um, I thought things went extremely well, had great feedback. Just a lot of energy in the building and I think, uh, I think there's starting to be some really positive reactions to our day that we had today. That's what I heard and I know both the principals equally heard as much. We had on the agenda earlier, you noted that we removed the crisis management plan. We brought our crisis, district-wide crisis team together and we've had a complete and thorough review of that from start to finish. And we have to make some final edits in that crisis plan. Um, it does incorporate some of the work that we, that we're doing and it does tie back to training that we had today as well with Alice training. Our safety protocols, if indeed there's an active shooter or a threat. One of the things that we noted in our plan, we need to do a better job of clarifying what it means to shelter in place, to have a hard lockdown, a soft lockdown. Those types of pieces of language, so we're adding that into the plan and then it will be ready for final board adoption and approval. But that's why specifically that was withheld and drawn from the agenda. We thought we would get those pieces put together, but again, we're, we're very close. We had great feedback from staff that participated in that, talking about it was a valuable use of their time. Appreciate the opportunity and they really felt we had a focused outcome as a result of that meeting, so that was positive. School prep, I've heard, um, good feedback. I know there's still a few things that need some attention. I think one of the rooms that was brought to some board members' attention, we have a, a room that has something happening along the exterior wall. And I want, uh, when Kraus Anderson is here to take a look at it because they, there's, there's some gapping and, and some really hideous caulking that was put in there as a stopgap measure and I want to understand why that's occurring in the first place. We need to understand that. So those are some things that obviously we'll be dealing with, but, um, the building looks in pretty good shape. Comparatively speaking to where it was about four or six weeks ago, so, um, that's, that's positive. Um, the bus, we have received our new type three vehicle. I don't know if you've had, had a chance to see it. If you go out and it's, it was parked over by the, um, little shed over here. And the goal of that is to utilize that so that it helps offset some of our transportation costs. It's a mini bus. And I know that was the vision of the board when you authorized purchase of that. It has arrived. I think the naming is on the side of it now, so it can be utilized. And then that's the intent, so, uh, and then part of that is also monitoring as well, some of the utilization of charter buses and to what extent we're utilizing those because we know that with the new contract, there's some additional costs that are, are part of charter buses services. So again, we're hopeful that that will be utilized. Construction updates, you heard a little bit earlier from, from Lucas. We have had the contract in the hands, um, pretty much our last week with our district legal counsel, late Thursday afternoon, evening. I received feedback. There were a few questions in there that, um, I have to cycle back to Lucas on and, um, I think we'll have that buttoned up and it will require, I anticipate, a special board meeting to get that buttoned up so we can keep our schedule moving accordingly. But again, I, I think we're in a pretty good place with all those things, given what we heard tonight from Steve and from Lucas, um, and then wrapping up that contract agreement. Negotiations, I know we need to get together a negotiation subcommittee relatively soon. I'm hearing a whole gamut of, of feedback out there from some school districts, just wrapping up to others similar to us, haven't even started. So I'm, I'm not feeling any anxiety about that, but, um, I do envision that in the next week or so, we'll pull together the, a negotiation subcommittee so we can start and commence that process because we need to. Enrollment, uh, right now, and again, these are purely projections, but we are projecting a slight increase. I believe we ended around eleven oh five last year. I think those were the numbers that we've, we've looked at. And right now we're projecting, uh, one thousand one hundred and twelve learners this year, so, um, every little bit helps and it's something that, that's positive. Um, and the other thing that I'll just share is we are being pretty intentional about watching our arrow brand and how we're making certain that the eagle feathers not attached to that. So, um, as we look at clothing that people are wearing representing the Pipestone Arrow. So again, that's just something that we're being really mindful of as well. Those are the things that I, I wanted to offer and share and, um, I know that the principals have things to offer and share as well.
How many students was on that bus or can be on that bus?
Oh goodness.
Fourteen.
Is it, I was going to say sixty, but maybe it's fourteen.
It's something like that, yeah.
Yep.
Um, as far as the logo, has the two places in Telm that do sports clothing been notified?
They are going to be. I, I know we were talking about doing a personal visit and, yep.
And the radio station too, I understand.
Well, yeah, I heard that, um, that the broadcasting uses the, the old.
Oh.
Arrow with the feather attached to it in terms of how, in like a break or something when they're doing the broadcasting, that that's the Pipestone emblem that we're trying to again assure people that we are not utilizing that as our, as our brand.
And then the other question I had was, uh, on the charter buses. We have to make sure and monitor that because that cost went up huge.
I get, yeah, I agree.
We should get a precedence if they're, because they could run two school buses cheaper than one charter bus.
Well, and I think we've gotten way too lax on how many, how often we're using charter buses. I mean.
Everybody likes to ride.
Well, yeah, everybody likes to ride it.
Because that cost.
I agree, but, yeah.
It matters a double.
Yeah, that was the one thing that might, when we negotiated that Rudolph wasn't going to bend down. And, and we told him that, you know, with it going up this much, we're probably not going to be using it as much this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and maybe we need to talk to Rick about what, what are the criteria for what.
That's what I, I just made a note to myself, ask Rick to process.
Yeah.
To determine. I know I've been in districts in the past where the district will say, we are paying for a charter bus. And then if there's a sports club that wants to do the, pay for the difference, the upcharge, well, then that's, that's on the club, that's on the organization. But then you have to be cautious about running into some equity issues too, because one club may have more money than another and.
I said, that's what I don't like about that is some sports are able to, you know, just because of numbers or cash or people, you know, that's.
Yeah.
I think there should just be set criteria for it.
And I know it got bad, it, you know, not bad, but we, we started using it a lot during COVID. Because it was more room, you could space kids out, you could, you could have airflow. You know, there were reasons that it, it made sense and so we, we went way that direction. And I think we just need to.
Circle back.
Circle back and go back the other direction.
Yeah.
It's just, that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've got a note that we'll follow up accordingly.
Okay.
As far as enrollment goes, has, has there been kind of a steady decline of just towns and districts of our size over the last ten, fifteen years?
You know, it's, it's interesting question that you asked, Tyler, because, um, about a week ago, and I, I wasn't able to participate in the entire webinar that was put on by the state demographer from, from Minnesota. But it, it highlighted regions and they had it color-coded and I've asked for the slide deck. But southwest Minnesota, there's one county that showed growth. Everything else showed decline. And the county, county that showed growth was Nobles County. Everything else was declining in terms of county population over the course of the last ten years using census data. So to your question, yes. But the, what, seven or eight or nine, whatever you want to call the metro, that has, that has grown significantly. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent.
Too much.
Growth.
Well, it's just that people don't have as many kids, so you have to have more people to get more, you know what I mean? That's.
Smaller families.
Yeah, smaller families and.
Bigger farms, not as many in the acreages, yeah. A problem we're not going to solve tonight.
Nope. Any other questions? Nine point two, principal's board report.
Good evening. Um, I just want to give a shout out to just all of my staff and the custodians and the secretaries as we're gearing up for this year. Everything that they've put into getting the school year ready, just going to each of the classrooms, the secretary is doing everything and our custodial staff is still working hard just making sure that everything is ready to go. So just a shout out to them. Today we did kick off a teacher in service and just the energy level was just through the roof today. So I think we're all excited to start the school year and I think teachers are too. You can see it on their faces. Tomorrow, um, is day two and it's a workday for teachers. I'll also be doing some meetings with each one of my grade levels, kind of getting a, a start to where we at with the school year and where we need to go. Wednesday is our open house timeframe. From ten AM to three PM are scheduled conferences that parents can schedule to meet with teachers. And then from four to seven PM, it's an open house kind of come and go type thing. We usually have pictures during this time. We're not this year. We're only able to get one photographer and that's just not enough. So pictures are going to be at a later time, which is going to be Friday, September eighth. Um, we'll do a vision and hearing screening for all students during that time as well. Thursday, we're going to have an ACES training for our staff, um, so they can understand that and, and strategies and things they can do with students.
And real quick, Jen, ACES, adverse childhood experiences, that's what that stands for.
Yes, yeah. Uh, currently at the elementary, all the positions have been filled. We've had a couple of movements with in-house and some new hires. And we have fast testing windows coming up, September eleventh and the twenty-second. Those are kind of the big things that are at the elementary. Any questions?
Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you.
Good evening. Um, for the high school, uh, I first would like to second what, uh, Jen said about, uh, noticing and thanking the custodial staff, the secretaries, the parents, everyone has just really pulled together and I've been very proud of that. We also have open house on Wednesday and I did change up open house as in the past, it was if your student is in sixth grade, you come at this time. If your student is in seventh grade, you come at this time. Well, if you had a student in sixth grade, eighth grade and eleventh grade, you were going to be up here three times. Well, that, that's not convenient for our.
I have.
I'm sure. So I made three sessions that are all grade level. So session one is at ten thirty. We're anticipating they'll each last approximately an hour, but that all depends on the backup here and the library because we will start out, um, I am raising the bar on customer service as well. So we are going to have tables out there passing out student IDs with lanyards and greeting everyone that comes in and then sending them to the auditorium where I will go over an update of just a general overview of what to expect welcoming them and here's, you know, our expectations. We're going to have a great year. They will then come to the library to pick up textbooks and any technology such as their Chromebook. After that, they can visit their locker and then go meet their various teachers. I'm expecting an hour, probably a little more though, to be realistic. So the first one's at ten thirty, then the second session is at one thirty. And the third session is at five thirty in order to accommodate those parents who get off work at five o'clock. That way they're only making one trip up here and not multiple, multiple. Speaking of, uh, student ID badges, that is, um, something that I am, and I told the staff this today. I am willing to stand in a ditch as it fills with water over this issue because I believe that it is a, a security issue. And that every student is going to be required to wear a student ID at all times, not in their pocket, not on their phone. So that any adult in the building, um, who's walking around can easily identify which students belong to Pipestone area schools and anyone that, who does not. And that, that's a simple request and. And they are going to need that now to scan to get their lunch. I've worked with Tahoe Foods so that they can't simply punch in their number anymore. They will need it to check out any books, any technology, they will need that. So I'm trying to make them utilize the student ID as much as possible. It is also their entrance ticket into each class. I've asked teachers that every period to be outside of their door, greeting students and saying goodbye to the class that's leaving, greeting the students, and they have to be wearing their ID, not pulling it out of their pocket. If they don't have it, they need to go to the office to get a temporary ID. And there will be consequences as that goes along if that continues. I'm anticipating there will be some pushback to, I don't wanna have to wear it. But it kinda goes back to, if you can remember your cell phone, you can remember your ID. So the other thing is that I'm very grateful to the American Legion because one of the first things that I wanted to do and I have started is to start each school day out with the Pledge of Allegiance. And the American Legion is getting us flags for every classroom. And that is how we are gonna start out the day with a brief moment of silence afterwards. And any student who does not wanna participate just need their parents to notify the principal in writing of their choosing not to participate. I wanna make sure parents are aware. And also that any student wishing not to participate will not be denigrated because of it. And the student who opts out may not denigrate the other students for participating. Homecoming dates, that is coming up very rapidly here. September twenty-ninth is that Friday. So on that Monday, which is the twenty-fifth, we are having coronation at seven thirty in the auditorium. We are going to be having small little pep rallies with the student council during lunches by grade level in the gym, just some fun games, get school spirit built up, which is another goal of mine. Then there will be a parade on Friday. There's gonna be more details coming out, but we're going to try to get the community involved as much as possible, raise school spirit, ask the community businesses if they would like to participate in the parade and have their float, not sponsor a float, but have a float, incorporate the elementary school students, the middle school students. And every organization or activity can have a float that they need to, obviously, have approved by me. And they'd need a driver over eighteen, a waiver signed. And then their driver would need to bring the float up to school at, say, two o'clock and then go downtown. I know that student council was talking with SRO Officer Danks about it today and the fact of needing a permit and what they all needed with that security-wise. And other than that, we're getting ready for school. I will be attending the Minnesota State Fair in support of our FFA students, their teachers and parents over Labor Day. And that is about it for high school.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
This is all awesome, that's all I get to say. And I think whatever, you know, we need to do to support you, that I'm willing to do that. I'm sure everybody else is, too, but I think there's a lot of good things here. And I'm assuming you'll go through the student badge thing on Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
And then do they need that to come into school, or can they leave that in their lockers?
No, they will need to wear it throughout the day.
But I mean, can they leave it in their lockers, or do they have to have it?
I understand, yeah, they could leave it in their locker, sure.
So you don't have to worry about it going home and getting left at their house?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
As long as they're wearing it during the school day and they put it on as soon as they get here.
Right, sure. Right, okay. Awesome.
Is that their, were they to use that at athletic events, too, instead of having?
Yes, thank you. They will also be using that at athletic events in order to get in. All they have to do is flash their.
So that's where they would have to bring it?
Yeah, you might wanna bring it home.
And we also ordered.
So you can't use it on your phone anymore, like the ID that's on your phone?
Correct, because you won't be able to see it, to know like that they belong here.
Right, no, 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 I mean at the sporting event.
Oh, they could wear, yes, they could do that at the sporting event, but it would work as an activity pass.
Gotcha.
We also ordered lanyards along with these little plastic cases for it to be put in.
Yep.
So it wouldn't it wouldn't get lost and stuff like that.
I guess I'd foresee having, just like Kevin, or just in Clint's, right?
Yes, that's exactly, yes.
I mean, just like you see a lot of them with even with the car keys and everything.
Right, yes. They would just have to display it around their neck so that people can see it. And their breakaway, too, so like if somebody came to pull on it, they'll break away and nobody would be hurt.
And then as far as the parade on Friday, I also think that's awesome. But what time will it be so that students can get on the buses to get home?
Yes, and that's what they're figuring out right now. And it all depends on the number of floats that we have in the parade.
Okay.
And we also would need to work on busing, like the littles and the middle school. Sorry, I called them littles. In the middle school down there, because that's gonna be too far to walk and keep track of. But also to have them in the parade so Jen can have her kids walk like in the front. And as soon as they get to their, where they're gonna seat, they just wrap around and then they can watch the parade goodbye.
Okay, awesome.
Something that we discussed early on, just again, to engender more community involvement, community engagement, school spirit as we do it. And we're certain the weather's gonna cooperate.
It is, it is, I'm telling you.
Awesome.
Yeah, no, you don't make it rain.
Well, I'll just, you know, as a veteran and as a member of the American Legion here in town, when I when I sent that request out, the responses were fast and furious that we'll support it however we can from all the groups. So it's very cool.
Is that something to go over on Wednesday, too, just to inform them?
Yes, I am.
I mean, be straightforward.
Yep, just this is what we are doing. And I was just going to say, this is what we are doing. And leave the, if there's a problem, arise, let that come naturally.
Right, right, this is what we're doing, yeah.
But tell them that this is what we're doing.
This is the way we do things here.
Yep.
Yep, along with the lanyards and the IDs.
Right, yep. Awesome.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Houston? All right, moving on, discussion items.
Is that us?
Think we've already got another one?
I got another one. I would like to discuss this area. I want, I would like to get ideas about what we can do to make, to utilize the space more. Or if we're planning to utilize the space by getting more books, fine. I mean, I'm okay with that, too, but I just think right now it's, the space is not utilized.
I do know the answer to some of that.
Okay, awesome.
Sorry, I do know the answer to some of that as I've been speaking with our librarian, Lori Gunning. And she has a lot of books in the back that have not been utilized, but they also haven't been barcoded or labeled. And she's a one-man show right now, or one-woman, excuse me. And she is working on getting those. And as soon as she gets them up and ready, she is gonna be putting those out. And then she's also gonna need to, obviously, purchase more books. And I even talked to her about the possibility of donated books in the meantime.
Right.
And she said that, yes, she was open to that.
Oh, well, then that would be something to get out. I think a lot of people would probably have. I do.
I do.
I have books I'd love to donate.
I think she plans on doing that, but right now, she's really working with open house and textbooks.
Yeah, I get that, okay, awesome.
Any other discussion items anybody have?
Does the school board get to have a float?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think somebody's got a trailer that Seed Corn fits on it, that would fit real well on the parade.
Way to go.
Okay, I have, so that's a great idea. The school board have a float.
For real.
I think we should. We're in.
You heard it here first, folks. I got a couple cars we can use.
Yeah. That'd be fun, too.
It would, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that'd be fun, we could do that.
Then we'd have to do much for the float.
See?
I don't trust Mark's driving anyway. I do think it'd be fun to participate.
Yeah, I thought about that, that'd be cool.
Number eleven, board action. Eleven point one, resolution accepting donations. I'd like to point out and thank Christ the King Lutheran Church for a two-hundred-dollar donation to the wellness room and Robert Minders for a five-hundred-dollar donated for letters and table. Can I get a motion approving the resolution accepting these donations?
Someone?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes. Eleven point two, approve revised policy one oh two, equal educational opportunity.
Yeah, just a brief comment on this. This is a policy that's one of those annualized policies. And we realized that as we reviewed, there were a couple of tailing pages of the policy that weren't included in the previously adopted policy by the board. So this is just ensuring that we have the complete thing in front of the board for adoption. And again, it was it was just an oversight when it was presented previously. I believe it was from.
Last one.
Yeah, but it was from like the last, was it the last two pages, Deb, that we?
Oh, yes, yes.
Did not include. Complete inadvertent oversight.
Can I get a motion to approve the revised policy one oh two?
Someone?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes. Eleven point three, approve to declare equipment obsolete.
Board members, when you open up the attachment that's included, you'll see that it was dated August sixteenth. Originally, this was from Rich when he was the maintenance director. So they had started it prior to that date, obviously. But we had a double stack commercial oven, two double stack commercial ovens, actually. And then it was originally thought two, but actually three rolling metal food service carts that these food service directors declared that those can become obsolete. And so that's why we're presenting them as such this evening.
Are those ovens not working anymore?
They were replaced.
I don't know the answer to that. It was just a replacement cycle.
Yeah, so the ovens, I think, were in the site, yeah.
I don't know, did Tahoe contribute to those in any way or not, okay.
So what do we do with them?
Listen, a surplus to sell, and I think you're.
Thank you, you take bids on.
It could be yours, Mo. Commercial double oven, think of how much you could cover it with.
Can I get a motion to approve to declare equipment obsolete?
Someone?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes. Eleven point four, approve transportation contract with Southwest Minnesota Christian.
Let me see the agreement attached. This is just one of those ongoing processes that happens every year with Southwest Christian School for Transportation Services. You can see the agreement, it's very similar. In fact, I believe it's the exact same agreement that we've had in the past with them.
So what do they do, what's, what is it?
It's to assist with transporting their students. Do we receive reimbursement back?
Correct, we receive reimbursement back, yes. Because even if someone's going to Southwest Christian, we are still responsible for the transportation from Pipestone to our line.
So if we have a student ten miles north of town that goes to Southwest Christian, we have to get him to the line, is that correct?
Correct.
I just, just one.
No, it's a good question.
And then we do get some reimbursement from the state.
So do we, is that what these buses are, then, we actually bus kids?
We don't, no, Southwest Christian comes into town.
Or we just reimburse them?
Yeah, that's what this number is.
Okay, okay. They take care of it all, we just have to reimburse them for the miles that they're in our district because we're getting reimbursed.
Yes.
And then some of it'll get reimbursed.
Yep, yep.
Can I get a motion to approve the transportation contract with Southwest Minnesota Christian?
Someone?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes. Eleven point five, approve modifications made to the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Middle School Handbook. Is that the wording that?
Yeah.
That Tyler saw last month?
There's a couple things, wasn't there? I thought there was a couple things on here.
Well, we updated the Pledge of Allegiance in here. And then the rewrite of the, to reflect the school meal policy five thirty-four, those were the two things that we wanted to highlight in the changes. And as far as some of the grammatical changes, those we know will have to happen next year because this was already published. But with these things, we wanted to make known because of the practice that Mr. Huesman referenced. And then we know with the changes that happened with the passage of the of the act that happened with the state legislature with the free breakfast and free lunch, we had to have reference to that officially by the board because that wasn't officially by the board in the original adoption of the handbook.
So is the ID part of it gonna be put in there, too? I mean, just so for next year, we can get it in for next year? Like, shouldn't that be something that should be added to these modifications so that they get put in for next time? Or no?
Good question. What do we have in the high school handbook?
How strict is that? You know, if you do not have a positive meal account balance to purchase an all cart item, like, do you let them go? Below ten, I mean, I know I've, like, gone below, like, negative ten, negative twenty. And that's my, you know, we just not getting on there and doing it?
There is a school board policy, this just touches on some things in it, and that does need to be reviewed and updated as well. There's like ten more policies, and we can set our own limits in there. But I think it is set at ten dollars, though, that's what it currently states right now.
So what what happens if kids walk up there and they don't, like, my kids would never know their account balance. Do they have to turn around and put it back? Or do you let them take it and then the principal calls?
I've never known them to stop at ten dollars, ever, so.
So I know people have had more than ten dollar negative balances, so.
I would hate to think that they would embarrass.
No.
You know, I don't.
I don't, yeah. But I do think if they are negative like that, they'll say, well, you know, I think they may get known to them that you aren't, you know.
Yep. And parents get notices, too.
Yeah.
That's just if they follow through with them.
Right.
Why do I wear my junk mail for a year?
Yeah, I don't normally get a notice until it's, it is negative.
Well, you set it yourself, though. Like, mine, I have set at ten dollars, so that once it's below ten dollars, it notifies me daily. And now, and now that I have zero balance on everybody, it notifies me of that, too.
It does, I have a positive, but it notifies me all the time.
Yeah, if it's below your, if it's below your whatever you set, it'll, every day it'll tell you. All right, just that every day, every other day. Yeah, I think it's every other day it sends it to or something, it's on a cycle, though. I get it at least once a week. I think it's twice a week, though.
Mine's daily.
Is it daily? I mean, I don't remember if it's daily or twice, I don't know, it's a lot, though. I have, I get a lot of emails, and it both says zero, like, whatever. But, yeah, you can set your parameter for when it starts notifying you. But yeah, you can set your parameter for when it starts notifying you.
So, are we good with what we have here?
I think so.
Can I get a motion to approve the modifications made to the 2023-2024 Middle School Handbook?
Are we going to put that in for next year, for the ID?
We'll have to have, we'll have to have discussion.
Definitely.
So, I got, I got a motion, need a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes. 11.6, Approve the 2023-2024 High School Handbook.
Yeah, very similar, you see the handbook attached. Mr. Huston has had his fingerprints on this more than the previous handbook, because the middle school one was sent to the printer before he was here and arrived, so I might defer any comments to him, you might have questions you might have.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the 2023-2024 High School Handbook?
Some more.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes. 11.7, we already approved. 11.8, Change Meeting Time for the September 25th-2023 Regular School Board Meeting.
You heard earlier tonight that that's conflict, and I was made aware as Brad, and I talked about this early today, that that happened last year with the board apparently, and we didn't have the time to make the adjustments, so we wanted to get this on the agenda so that the adjustment can be made, thinking that we could still do the same day and anticipate that we would wrap up the board meeting prior to the actual coronation occurring, and you don't have to try to figure out another day on top of it, we just have to move it up earlier to the, to the extent that we can with your schedules.
I can do any until after 5:00.
I was, could we do 5:00?
What time does coronation start?
7:30.
7:30 or...
I could do 5:30.
5:30?
As I say, for me to get, you know...
I think 5:30 would be...
You're already at an hour 15 tonight.
I suppose you don't know what you have for a tenner.
5:15?
Well, 5:30 is two hours, though.
Yeah, but if you want to go grab something to eat, a little gap.
5:30, 5:30 is the earliest time.
5:30?
Or it would be easier to just make it a different night. Are we going to have to do this special meeting? Could you do it that smoothly? No?
No, because this is set. Okay. 5:30 and just...
I think 5:30.
Move it along?
5:30.
Two hours, I mean, that should be fine.
We don't anticipate anybody presenting, right? I mean, not, not like...
Because tonight, we have the two presentations, and I don't anticipate that will be the case.
You have to bring us the hand.
You've got to bring us the hand. Oh, yeah, okay, fine, I'll bring us that for everybody.
I know, I need a minute.
So, 5:30, so five, everybody okay with 5:30?
Yep, I am.
There you go. Someone want to make a motion to change it to the next school board meeting to 5:30?
I move we change the next school board meeting on September 25th, 2023 to 5:30.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes. Number 12, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion passes. We're adjourned.